I mean, I think this is gonna get off of this. I thought it was a bit.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
The dead.
Something, something, you know, I think it's a bull.
I know. Just shock me.
I talked to Dave. I'm sure wrong too, but. I talked to Dave, I'm sad when I saw him walking from somewhere, or something. Sadly. So, I'm just doing this part. He's not getting some more. I said, I'm trying to consider. Yeah, that's just something I have to say. So, do you have any more to leave? Is that where I'm? So. 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 I'm good.
Yeah. I can tell you're back here.
Yeah.
Wait for that.
Say she was, uh... So.
Oh, no, okay, I was gonna do like, you know.
Wrong way. Wrong way. No, this is what I said, so that was it. She... No final.
Just ask them, do you have to be able to catch us?
I didn't know any better. I didn't either.
Why you neither? I wondered that, just.
He, uh, I talked to Dana, Dana, Dana said, yeah, I guess Dana this way. Or Dana. Didn't you say so? Yeah. I thought I wanted to see the real person.
This one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, he has been, what's on?
It's all my thing.
Yeah. Cause I thought he retired. Yeah.
Is that?
Yeah.
I wonder why she's there.
It's, uh...
It is, sir. Yeah. Shh. 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 Is it open to school?
No, in service.
In service, okay. I thought I heard the kids next door. Playing outside.
Shh.
What time?
What are you doing?
Read.
We got another email from PSNP. If you have a chance to answer that, or do you want me to just answer the questions?
Oh, um... Another email?
Yeah, just want to follow up saying we haven't got one yet.
Okay, well, no. Sent you. I get your response from you from, I answered it and sent you first. Thank you.
There you go.
It seems like we had time.
There it is. That was, sorry, I was saying, he just wants to check in.
Did you tell you were waiting each other?
Yeah, you sent them a Monday.
Her love that said, yeah, I didn't see the email.
Okay. Well, I didn't, yeah, you sent it to me first. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see that. It was surprising.
We just need you to do, that's the most, are you?
Yeah.
Where to go?
Um... Yeah. What time?
I don't really know.
So, I had, uh, I had a deal set up. Six, seven, eight, nine. Yeah, this, what you said, like at nine. And then all this meeting up here. They were around all building. Everybody, see me inside?
I don't think so. This happened last year with this question. And, yeah.
Vehicle's out there.
Mightn't take a truck that's, yeah.
Uh, looks good to me. Wear all the cap.
Well, you'll do.
Other than.
We'll do like, one field, two or...
He wants to do every one field and then, yeah, out here, and then, yeah, Sheriff's Office.
Yeah. And Sheriff's Office, I think he'll probably send the third team to travel, like.
Where is?
Yeah. And then Kirk Fisher takes him, and then, yeah, and then, yeah.
And then, yeah. I'll sit here and make a list. But, yeah. Let me put it in here first.
So, you're saying you're waiting on husband, after. He got a little, I don't know. But today, I think, is maybe the turnaround point. He's okay. Yeah. It's, uh, they're not being, yes, they're not good.
Thank you.
Not very long, I'm sorry.
You're playing me? You're playing my ego?
That's a good one.
Is that weird? Doing these things? Yeah. Tell him, look, if you're willing to do that, you know, it's, uh, these things, he's gonna do it.
Oh, yeah, so that's, yeah.
Very, I'd like to know if you guys have any suggestions on what we're gonna do about it. Cost, and let us know the cost.
Okay.
Of course.
And if it's now in here, keep a picture. And this is for the State of Kansas and the country.
For anything you wanna send it to, as per vintage, Eric.
Perfect.
It was amazing.
Yes.
Don't you want to look to you?
I'd like to have that in the bag.
And that.
It was in this. So, it was to give the man.
Oh, it was in that?
Yeah.
It's weird. I wonder. I'm saying, I'm sending it to him, I'm assuming he's sending it. Getting in the water.
Welcome to my world.
Cracking in. Out of control.
All right, Sonny, well, I'll meet you in order to play. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
How's your key weight? I mean, and you want to learn the job, we can. I can't believe that. Thanks.
Morning.
So, surgery went okay?
Yeah, I'm feeling a little bit too, uh, I'm just, I'm just, uh... Said he said I could see him, he was honestly in shock when he came up. I took the decisions. Taking back what's, uh, and I just, sure.
Yeah.
Now, come on up. Don't hide back here. Right hand center.
Yes, we did this.
Yes, we did. Congratulations. This is the momentous accomplishment.
Get in there a little.
Forty-five years, come on, guys. Here, let me slip over here. Congratulations. Forty-five years of county, all the same thing, correct?
No.
No? Oh, I did know that. Yeah, cool.
You started out at high school?
Yeah. Well, like I said, just live on this page, and I really, I really, really, really want to thank you for your service at county. Uh, it's been great. Been enjoying working, I know you're not retired, but you're saying like that.
And you will give us your notice before you do.
Yeah, before you do, right, all right.
All right, smile, everybody.
Perfect. Good job. Thank you. Really appreciate it, yeah. Thank you. There you go, man. Thanks.
Have a good day.
All right, you too.
See ya.
Thanks.
Uh, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay.
This is a move to send it to, uh, approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carried, the agenda is accepted. Uh, we'll take care of some housekeeping real quick. Your honor, I've been, I've been waiting so long. Uh, Christie, you know, we talked about sending a letter to, uh, different entities requesting the information for any increases by, uh, May or by June. By May next year, so we do the process in June, and, uh, Christie has sent us up. It's generic, so we can send it to anybody who's possible, state of Kansas, whoever we need to do for the war comp or the insurance.
But the tip is just insurance that we have a problem with.
Well, we got war comp after the fact, too. This year. So, from, from the state of Kansas. And surely, they can, they can, just their schedule, if we have to have our budget process done, uh, or work on our budget and have done, they need to get us the information before our budget process is formally completed, so that we can budget for the increase, so.
I look forward to their response.
Yeah, me too. But, so, uh, I just think we just consensus that this is good.
Question? If it's not in by the date that we put on there, are we, do we have to pay the increase? Do we have any legal reports in? In other words, in them coming in after our budget process and saying, we're gonna increase your insurance by eighty thousand dollars, and, oh, sorry, you couldn't budget for it, you're not our problem, do we have any legal reports to pay that if we didn't? If we say your request has to be in line?
No.
We have no legal.
Well, I don't, I don't know how to handle it. Authority can cite you to say that the state has to give you, you know, new information on, even though you have a budget deadline, I understand, but what you're saying is just, that doesn't bind, uh, state agencies per se. I think it's appropriate to ask them.
Yeah, I mean, even though the state, even though the state agencies know that by statute, we have to do things by a certain date, they should be held accountable also to give us the information by a certain date, I would think.
Yeah, well, that, but that's...
Looking for a different office, or this office?
This office in the public?
Sure, yeah, absolutely, fine.
The, uh, there's just no mechanism that I know that says because of that, we can go ahead and say it's invalid, uh, to encumber, we can't encumber ourselves to this because you didn't state it in time.
Right, okay. Just that, I just went down.
But don't you think we should write to the person here and send that out? I mean, it's...
Yeah, I mean, this is just, this is just getting ready to, to go, getting ready for, so, I don't think we need a motion to accept this, I think just general consensus and, okay? Sign. That way Christie can have this on file, I need to send it to somebody, send it to somebody, wait to give.
Yep.
We have a purchase order here to Cameron Hindenburg for building the gate for the trash area for supplies, labor, install. Uh, Pat has been trying to get this done for over two years to get a gate on here. Uh, talked to Hoffman's and several others, and never got any information back, and he talked to Cameron, and he said he'd do it, so, uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase order to Cameron Hindenburg for...
Can I see what the work is for?
Pardon? Oh, yeah, yeah, for the, for the trash gate, for building it.
Are you got it about right?
Yes, right up there. Like I said, Pat's been trying to get it done for over two years.
I've been wondering why.
Yeah.
He's asked, like, six people, he said, Hoffman's was the only one that actually came and looked at it, but never seen it, never got it.
And so, what type of gates is this gonna be? Do we have the information? It's wood, metal, steel? So, he's gonna build it?
Yep.
Pat has the funds and his...
And they are trying to do some of the stuff that we have around here, just to really pause, so that we can do that.
What, what funds, second, Matt? Really, thank you.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the purchase order to Cameron Hindenburg to build and install the gate for twenty-five hundred dollars.
Second.
If the problem moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carried. And I'm sure it's, well, this is just a comment, I'm sure one does see, uh, that, uh, our former, uh, judge, Eric Campbell, passed away. Uh, in honor of Judge Campbell, Governor Laura Kelly has, that has directed all flights to be flown to Habsburg on Friday, September nineteenth, in his honor. So, uh, I'd like to pass honor to adults, so this could be his family. Um, he was a nice guy that we really enjoyed talking to him, never came in. He always made me smile, so. And there's this, anybody else want to put that?
We're supposed to be, if you're, what, uh...
That's impressive.
Okay. Our head is the audit. Okay. All right.
Did you guys want to do a memorial?
Yes, I think that'd be appropriate.
Did you want to do a memorial?
I think that would be appropriate. All right, 9:15. What you got, Scott?
I've got all these, uh, brass weed, uh, damages in the back of the march. They're just now turning into us. Seth, one of you are talking about yesterday, or is that different? Different. Okay. Thousands, hundreds. If you look at the pictures, uh, again, do you bite these with the insurance or do you just let the insurance let them bite about it? If you look at the pictures, that thing's barely two, three inches under the dirt, you know, or three inches of the ditch.
Mm-hmm.
To me, that's not. They should have deeper.
Plow dents at least?
Yes. And is this fiber or just copper? As they said, twenty-five strand.
Twenty-five decal. Probably the insurance company giving you the deck, right? About that. Then it takes a purpose.
That's about dollars. Mary also mentioned something that Aaron was arguing about these, those company, brass weed.
What does, uh?
I'll take it back. Or probably.
What more regulations say about when somebody uses our roadway and very capable or anything, how deep it has to be to be denied?
We went over that a few years ago.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It's to be the edge of the road, it needs to be below that.
Remember, I thought we were saying thirty. I thought we were around thirty.
Thirty cent. That way, if we clean the ditch, we don't have to worry about.
Especially if we're getting right here.
Yeah, right. And so, to me, and I'll take a look at it, if it's in the bottom of the ditch and it's not buried.
Except for the edge of the road, it looks like. So far off the edge of the road, but we'll clean the ditch and you can see right where the trench is where they took it out. So, as Scott said, it looks like it's only two or three inches deep, not the prescribed. What's the, you get roadway regulations?
We did. We got, so, yeah. We know, probably four years ago, we made, set a roadway because we were having issues with this before, and we came up with some regulations.
Thirty-six. Well, so you can see from the pictures and the trench where they pulled it out.
So, how much was taken off prior to?
Well, it was, it was brass.
Right. So, you're saying this was the edge of the roads prior to?
Yeah, he didn't bury it strictly in the off there.
I guess I would ask Todd sent a letter to him saying, "Look, we have, here's the state, here's our regulation. This was not buried in the correct, correct depth, therefore, no liability."
So, let's get Scott to give Todd the copy of that, so that you can look it over. Is that some lead or is that?
It's a, I'm sure it was lead.
Okay. I might need to track down one. Ready?
Okay, uh, back to the dark rail question you had about, uh, the runoff there. Uh, according to MUC TD, is you have to go through an engineering study?
Question about where put it or whether need to, whether need to. Was there an obstacle there or just?
Great.
It's just like when you come down that hill and come around, and the ditch is there and it kind of goes down. I don't know. It's just like, it's straight back.
I would, I would almost think that on that, you would want to put up some of those.
Object warning markers.
Yeah, but they, they, what?
Object.
On the I-4.
That'd be a good idea, just anything.
So, you know, if you're, you'd have to go as deep with the object warning marker, you can just put up the, depending on.
You read in the MUC TD.
Whether, I believe you can apply with just roadway markers, like classic ones, you may have to go to a true Chevron that, that really gets people away from it, so.
Yeah, anything like that that would mark that it's, you know, if there's snow or something and you just don't realize.
Yeah. Plus, everyone's out here on the road ahead, if you come in the dark and you didn't know the road.
Right.
You would be straight, they curb this when in fact.
Well, that's like right at this hospital, the back road to the hospital.
Oh.
The way we have. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't hear of that yet, and that was the same way in the dark.
Right.
You couldn't tell where it was, like in the dark that way one night, it's like, oh, yeah, we heard there.
Yeah.
I got a quote on the inspection of these bridges at the reservation.
Okay.
So, once I gave you guys, I did find another one, uh, down on A Road, so I added that to the list.
What was that? A Road, what?
Uh, I emailed you.
Yeah, I might need that, because that one.
So, bridges, do you have, have they, number of them?
Yeah. I got 190 of them, they, they, I got 158 H, or maybe a second.
Yeah, it's like H30, uh, I gave them to this guy.
Okay, a lot of problems. Sorry, the problem.
Um, so anyway, I've got Bobak, Michael Maris, those are inspections, and he's with about twenty-five hundred foot bridge, maybe has files on it, and about thirty-two hundred that's not have files on it. I've found files on all of about five hundred, so, that's just around forty thousand dollars for inspections. I did find an email also, I haven't talked to, used to want to get it, uh, from Tim from Ramirez, which is Peter Rose, who's been down there, uh, about the 190 bridge and I-7, uh, that they tried, did have that, we closed it back in 2004, and I found an email on him where they went in and built that bridge, and I gave them drawings to, has some veins on the Simon's Bridge, so, uh, we still need to do that memorandum of understanding.
Well, yeah, that might be a, we've decided, I guess it's still a decision, but, well, are they going to maintain it after this, and that was the memorandum?
Yeah, but like I said, I got an email, uh, from Ramirez, quite saying that they were going to take care of it. Okay, okay.
Well, I think probably just, I mean, I think it turned out that once that we got past 190, there was a larger question here about, you know, ownership and control more than just kind of maintaining. I would agree if we just had, you know, one bridge and that's it to maintain, and they had kind of built it and taken control, maybe that would be the idea, but it would be a rough question here about the roadway issues and all that stuff we're talking, talking about, so.
Well, my question, too, is according to the, uh, K-Dog, and, you know, who's responsible for bridges, you know, the tribe on the reservation here is responsible for forty bridges, it's on the inventory list.
That's on the list.
Yes. How did those get on the list? Was there a memorandum of understanding?
No, no, I think there's, I guess, so, well, all I know is at this point is that there is like a federal program that puts them, you know, on an inventory. So, I would presume at some point that means that either federal government or some agency funded it, assisted in building it, or something like that, so that they would go, it's, it's federal inventory, so, uh, whether that, that list matches up with what they have is not a question, but the regs are that thick, too, about how to get that done, so, it's, it, it, I, I would guess that that's just the case, that if they've got, I'm not saying which one's a which, but if they've replaced bridges, federal funds, you know, it just seems to me that would be that trick.
Well, Tara's looking, I thought for last week, I got another email about, um, back in the early seventies about the BI-A-84s, and how they determined, so she's trying to see if she can find anything on that.
Yeah.
I think that's all part of the question. Do these bridges all have to be inspected in one year when you break it up over a two-year period to work the cost? Because there again, that's unbudgeted.
Right.
May not, in your engineering fund, I think you add.
Little bit fifteen thousand a year anyway. I'd have to check with, right now, the state doesn't know anything about it.
Yeah, they, so these are not on any inventory list, they've never been inspected, they've never had.
I'm thinking the state would keep that in.
With the state, right? Fifteen's not bad.
They're, they're on any inventory list, federally. The thing I'm working off of is what K-Dog sent me, uh, is the federal, uh, bridge inventory.
I don't know, I swear that's. I don't know that we're, I mean, yes, it would be nice if we could, uh, break it up over a several-year period, but I don't know how we're going to be able to do that since it's not being inspected.
Right. Well, I can tell this was 2004, this one, all of this, and then on, somebody's, they don't have documentation, but they just got handwritten on there, you know, BI-A tribe, you know, sort of, for them.
So, you've looked, if you've looked at these bridges, correct?
I have not.
Right. You've had ones.
I, I walked around and, and measured and said, "Yes, this is lower point feet, it is considered a bridge." As far as getting down and meeting them and looking at them.
No, no, well, I mean, the, the ones that you found on 198 that are in deplorable condition.
One fifty.
One fifty. One fifty, I'm sorry, one fifty. So, can you, uh, set up some kind of a priority list, such as those are the ones that are, you know, in the worst shape and, and, you and Matt can go through and look at those and set up a priority list so that someone might be pushed into next year, I mean, just because of timeline.
Do you think there's any benefit to send a letter of your opinion, or say, "Well, there may need to be some funding for you to..."
We can try.
...set the cost. Todd, is that something you could?
Yeah, I mean, this is got, this is big, a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a good idea for it. I started.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, I get you. And that's all part of it.
House watching, this is just for inspection, this isn't repair or anything.
But, yeah. And, and like I say, if it's, if the, I've said it here before, if the costs are, you know, astronomical, then the only other option we have right now is to close the bridge and shoot down the road.
Yeah, you can shoot any anywhere from seven billion to fourteen million dollars.
For some of those.
Or one fifty.
Those are big bridges.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, that's the only option we're going to have, so, we'll see what happens.
While we're talking on bridges here, uh, K-Dog contacted me last week, or week before actually, and we had to take, we were going to look at three of our bridges, just to, they check our inspections, making sure our inspections are being properly, so, I pulled the files, we run out of net with them, uh, talked with Matt this morning, and we do need to do something there because, uh, once the inspections are done, the bridge, just a whole tour, pull the files back, and, uh, what I learned from these folks the other day is there's some rip wrap that need to put on one of these bridges because the, uh, the water level, the difference of box, but it's still considered a bridge, with the concrete's after lava, that it's corroded, uh, there are things, I need it, so, like eighteen inches back, like fourteen, so we need some rip wrap to put in there to help prevent from underlying, the box itself is like, you know, box, you can't share, you know, cracks or anything like that. Uh, another bridge we looked at was, uh, over there on, uh, 254 J2, which is just west of Circle 11, it's a concrete bridge. They said we need, on inspections, we need to do a little more in-depth inspections on, he said we need, uh, we need to put on a chain dragging, I guess, we did a lot of that, we had a piece of chain.
Big thing.
Across the deck, and you could hear, you know, oids, like, just oids, like, concrete's behind it, or be behind it.
You'd say with a hammer.
Uh, you'd do the same thing with a hammer.
Yeah.
Uh, then underneath the bridge, you could see all the wet spots, uh, when the rush was coming through with that. Uh, there was another term we had for that, they had like a little bank they go, bank out of, but as high as it is up there, you wouldn't reach it from the ladder, see that, that was some, uh, bucket truck or something, you know, he would, you know, that was, uh, 254 J2. How old is that bridge? And then we had, uh, one, 222 D6, where the actual creek bed is shifting, one side, uh, from the water flow, and starting to heat underneath the, uh, the pier there, uh, so again, uh, talking about, I think it's ripped out, out there, and they're going to have to work the water back, uh, towards the center, uh, as anyways.
So, when was the last time that those three bridges were inspected?
This, this last year.
This last year, this. Okay, who is doing our inspections?
Uh, Michael Maris, and he has notes in there about those, and that's what I was talking to Matt about, I said, "Once those files come back, do we ever read through them or find out what these issues are?" And he said, "Well, you should, Michael, tell them about the response." So, again, I think we need to put a plan together to where somebody's gone out and looked at some of these stuff, go through those files and see what some of the issues are, and do a little preventative, uh, work, so that, uh, play your vibes.
Yeah, I mean, uh, to me, that is something, uh, that as soon as you get those inspection reports back, you need to go through, it should be a bridge A, one, two, three bullet points, bridge B, one, two, three bullet points, whatever, you know, however many items there is, and those should be, uh, in my opinion, those should be items that need to be addressed, you know, immediately per the inspection.
immediately per the inspection. So, yeah, I said a plank yesterday, are you gonna handle that for a?
It's very comprehensive, but I think we're fine. So we can roll on the files and bridges.
Okay.
What was your first question?
Uh, L and two, two, seven. Do we have any rip wrap of our own, hold time for any, or, uh, the next thing I've had here, or? Uh, was heading up to home on Friday after I'm in and saw the hollies down here on thirty four and said it's probably highway doesn't support, they were hauling some dirt down, it was dumping in the field. So I called us with that and he says, okay, I can see you have all the dirt you want. So we're getting dirt, he's also, I got some concrete down there that, uh, we said we'd get that out. Uh, we said we've got a breaker down there, so, uh, we'll have some of it up there. I mean, some of those pieces were disabled. Uh, so I said something like, uh, we do have trucks running down there right now taking the dirt. He said possibly a hundred loads. So we're, we're getting separate pot, obviously, probably worth it though. But anyway, we're getting all the dirt we can. So much for the landfill, we've already taken some point, the bridge is not here, so up there, no.
That speed limit sign right there by the pot hole, they, they had asked if that could be moved farther to the east, to like where the top of the railroad tracks used to be because of semi-traffic, traffic created turning in there. Um, I think you're probably talking about thirty to forty feet moving across to the, it's on the east side of that drive instead of the west side of it, let's say something here. Yeah, it should be.
Anyway, that's what we're on, that body down there. Ever be, I mean, up in them, over here at two twenty six, around J four, right Circumvill, which was the side of that bridge not go, uh, tearing it out. Uh, I mean, it's a state now, but we're working with their lines on there. Steve Catherine's called, landed last week and we're not talking to him or anything. And we called some other here, two, uh, two thirty eight, N S four. We often, uh, see you got some money, we often use that two-inch rock, which isn't likely. He said, we're handling well, packing it really nice, uh, saying, you know, we got an extra quarter on one spot. There's a lot of this just here. That's a lot of like, you know, sixty-six down there. Anyway, thanks Steve, thanks Tara, happy. This week, uh, they had a five foot two, no, it's a one eighty two west of R, which we put in. Uh, that's some low spots on over there, three, two seventy eight, three, six, we're working on. But I haven't quite figured this out. Then, uh, so, I don't know. I think it's all, yeah.
How's W coming?
Talked to the guys again this morning, they're talking about rain, you know, part of, uh, smaller winters days.
Yeah.
Rain.
I know. Oh. It breaks the wa, the water, it's washing.
They want to, uh, get that low spot fixed up first. And so that's a big, uh, lot of dirt hauling and mud and a whole mess of work. I said, we, we've already missed two weeks because it keeps saying rain, rain, rain. It's a shower, it's not, so.
So you've got a low spot.
Uh, I'll go a little bit, yeah, so. These are, uh, uh, they're, they're, uh, kind of likely had a polygroup, like I'm saying, or come off that, uh, like I had in the garage and it came out like that and it's really dipped down hard.
I'd like to see pictures of that and, and also, I mean.
I know where you're going.
I'd like to see pictures of that. This first I heard that all of a sudden now we've got a low spot, we've got a whole tons of dirt in on it. It was come in, top rest the, or put gravel on it and it worked. I mean, are they out there today?
No, not, that's all I said, that conversation we had about, but, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, nobody's supposed to be done by the end of the year.
I've worked right out of little rains to the point you can't work anymore. Yeah. I mean, it's free water, then deep water. I mean, uh, Jason down there, Jason down in Southridge District did a great job. He came in and it, it was raining just that fine mist and he worked those potholes out, rolled it back in, using available moisture. It was great, worked great. I don't know why we're not doing more of that, so, thank you.
Tara, are you, are definitely taking a ride under that?
And if you're hauling dirt right now, are you hauling straight up dirt rather than having to haul it twice?
The dirt down there is not the back of the field, not, not what they were hauling the other day. You may have some down the other end of that lot, but it's not the back of the field. It's all top floor.
Okay. All right.
If you could, I would like to know what you find today up there on W.
Yeah, shoot email, shoot email for speaking, send it off.
I, I would like a phone call or a text. I'd like to know, I don't want to work, you know, I want to know what, I want to know what's going on, why we're not getting after it.
All right, thank you. We have a letter here that, uh, Department of Office made that. You got a copy of it? Uh, I think that's fine, we talked about this last week, uh, for, you know, having to, uh, have their supplemental coverage is other than the reliance standard, uh, taken out of the bank account, A, however they need to do, but it will no longer be taken out of the, uh, your payment over there.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So it's a first letter?
Yep, well, starts, uh, in the middle of the roll, very middle of the roll. So everybody's good with that?
I am.
Okay. So you can send that out.
Christie, we can send that to all employees, if it's the ones that are currently having to work there?
Probably send it to the ones that have offices right now, but then we'll probably send on to the department that they're distributing to everybody.
I would, you read my mind, at, at their next safety meeting, they'll make that announcement in future. Uh, and I'm not getting that kind of stuff, you're responsible for your own.
We need to decide, I think.
Mary did ask me about, you guys make a decision on the insurance today?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
You thought we had a little bit of leeway?
So one of the things that we looked at, uh, what you can, I, I asked about, um, funding and what we had available, all that, Christie, can I speak to what we have available?
I got funding in general that will cover the insurance. And I believe I also have funding in general that will cover the E M S.
Okay, so take just a, a pair of G-words so that Mark understands what, where that, so.
The employee one.
Adult community corrections.
One item.
And, yeah.
They, they actually reimburse them a little bit, so we.
Can you please speak up or talk to my hearing?
I agree. We budgeted in the budget for the inventory benefits. And since the adult community corrections and juvenile intake are granted, they reimburse the county.
So after our meeting last week, we, we got an increase from our insurance company?
I just didn't hear what you were saying, so that's why.
Yeah, did you want to?
So, please.
No, I can relax you.
Please.
We had gotten an increase after our budget was set. So now we've got to come up with the money from somewhere or the employees have to pay it or a portion of it. And like Christie said, we have, uh, employees that we give reimbursement for through grants. And therefore, that money would be enough to cover this for employees. And we, I think the thought is that we would do that because we didn't get raises this year.
Okay. Thank you. So what's the total amount from the law?
So around seventy-five thousand.
That's if we paid across the board what the increases was.
And through the reimbursements, we do have enough to cover that. So we're gonna need to move to approve those funds to cover?
I'd move the fifty grand.
Sure.
But if we, uh, use the reimbursement from the funds that Christie came up with, um, that were from the employees who, uh, we get grant reimbursement for, for their benefits, to pay for the increases from Blue Cross Blue Shield for all employees.
It's probably moving second to use the funds, uh, from the reimbursements from the grant facilities.
The grant, so adult community corrections and they get, we have to pay their, their benefits.
Yes.
But then we give reimbursement or that.
They grant reimbursements from adult community corrections, have you else?
Yeah.
And you will need to pay for the increases for Blue Cross Blue Shield for all employees.
That's correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Ayes, all opposing sign, motion carried.
Did you get to approve the new contract with the property? Or are you waiting for this?
The contract, we're in, we've been staying for five years.
Okay.
I think we have three more years.
Didn't that be a new contract?
They have an increase in January and July, January was the employee increase, July is the.
So you think she needs to add the thought here that we're gonna cover the increase in insurance or not?
We can.
That might help.
Well, that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be a good idea.
Because I think it's been talked about before.
Good idea, though.
Joyce, you're up.
Okay, thank you.
What's your?
Is it okay if I stand here or, we said it will count.
We'll come back and tag.
Yeah, we're gonna have to correct. My, my.
Hi. Um, how am I, I'm land out by Circumvill, we live there in Holton, that's retired people. Um, when we first spread about the solar farms, two thousand acres, we didn't think much about that. We're not against solar powered, you know, we like it when we see people have it on their roofs or in their yards and some of my family who's down at Meeta. Um, I grew up at Meeta, graduated from Meeta High School, taught school for thirty years and retired. But over the last month, we heard that that two thousand acres is no longer two thousand acres. It has grown, at first we heard eleven thousand and we went, that's a lot of farmland. Then we heard it's twelve thousand and now I believe it's thirteen thousand.
Where do you, where can I ask where you're getting those numbers from?
Well, uh.
Is it Facebook?
Not from Facebook.
Yeah, where, where, I'm just curious, where you're getting that from?
I have family and friends down around there, I don't remember where they found this out. Am I wrong, is it not thirteen thousand?
I will tell you, the best that I understand is that there is a company who has leased thousands of it.
Those are options for me.
And, and what they will do, what I've seen, is that they will lease multiple acres, as many as they can. And that they will look at the regulation and they will try to fit into that what acres they can. I will tell you, have you read the regulations? Perfect, love it, thank you. You are one of the first to.
Twice, I've heard it twice.
I do appreciate that. And so if you, if you've read in there, it states that the county, this county and all other counties, all hundred and five counties in the state of Kansas have the authority through regulation to limit the number of acres. Right now it says two thousand. And, and that's, that's what this, this set of regulations has, it's two thousand acres.
But hasn't that been changed to unless? Because, uh, when I was reading, uh, and this is on page eight, in order to maintain a rural character, preserve agricultural land, the C S E C S project area shall be limited to no more than one two thousand acre site. It originally said total, that's been crossed out, it's been edited to two thousand site unless the planning commission and the board of county commissioners approve a modification from this standard based on site specification, it goes on and on.
Thank you, yes, thanks for reading that. Go ahead, I don't want to interrupt you.
Well, um.
Am I making a comment or not?
No, sir.
Say again?
No, sir. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay, I don't know how this works either.
So you're, you're doing great, you're doing great.
My mom was always politically active. I have voted in every election, but I always took it for granted that our local officials here in the courthouse had our best interest at heart and the best interest of all of our county. I just wondered recently if, if that's really true.
Well, I'm, okay, well, why, why would you wonder that?
Well, because of.
Todd, go ahead. Sorry, I want to make sure that everybody understands the context here. These, the, the regulations they had input to were created almost a year ago. They were sent to the planning commission. Now, the planning commission has had a chance to have hearings or revise them as they wish and as were required to do. So if you're talking about the most current draft, the one that was approved by these folks was two thousand acres, as the old one would, that county commission, the planning commission has changed that, has not come to this body yet. I know they're having hearings, but I just want you to understand that what they approved and the send to the planning commission was two thousand acres.
And so the process will be that they'll have the next two, they've got two hearings coming up.
Oh, I know.
Okay, and so people will get to comment on that. Then that draft will come to us, then we can make changes and we send it back to them. That's how the process works and, um. And, um, I, I mean, I'm not sure why you would think that we don't have your best interest. What, what makes you think that? I'm just curious.
Well, it just seems like this has exploded and people haven't known. And as I talk to people, well, like, I have friends and family, as I say, you know, on the edge of what's going on down there. Forty percent of my high school is Native American. That's very close to the tribal lands.
It's, it's several miles from there, but.
That's close enough. If there's a hailstorm or something like that and it destroys a lot of things. I have been doing a lot of research and reading and from New York to Indiana to Texas where I have friends. Um, my friends there say that when these subsidiary subsidiaries of Next Extra come in and put up these solar farms, which makes them sound friendly, if there is a hailstorm or something that destroys them, the promise of that company coming in and cleaning up the mess and restoring the land so it's effective for food again, they will belly up, take out bankruptcy, move on. And there are a number of, I forget what it's called in New York, they all have a different name. So that the company isn't.
A shell company. It's that board you're trying to?
Yeah, it, it's not nationwide. So that's my concern because it seems that, uh, what I'm hearing from those who are really doing a lot of questioning and talking, even with, uh, the planning board, that you might be willing to okay the use of huge amount of lands to solar panels. And that really is concerning.
So what would give you that indication of what any of us would love?
I'm, I'm curious as to why you put it off on a funding committee.
That's the way the process is.
That's the way the process works.
That's how it's supposed to.
Statute requires.
I'm learning things as I go along.
Great.
But I'm very interested.
Yeah.
And so I would hope and pray that you would.
Could I address one thing?
Yes.
Would, does that be okay?
Sure.
So one of the things that we have put into the regulations are that decommissioning. A lot of people were concerned. We have a list of, we had a list of things when we sent complaining. One of those is decommissioning. So people were concerned that if, for whatever reason, whatever company it is, they walk away from it. We're requiring, um, an escrow account be set up to have money to decommission. And we arrive at decommission cost. Another good question, right?
I saw that. It's not much money.
Well, I don't even know what that number would be because, and I, and it, it.
If there's a number that you're going to use to us.
It's not been determined. So here's how it would be determined. Based on the size and scope of facility, we would hire an independent firm to come in at the company's cost. They would have to pay for it. That independent firm would tell us, that they're working for us, they would tell us it's going to cost, and I'm going to use the, the, the number, just a generic number, twelve million dollars. Probably way more than that, but. Whatever that number is, that would be put into escrow. And every year, it would be worked at by an independent firm to increase it due to inflation. So in twenty twenty-seven, I'm going to use that as an example, what would it cost? What, what would it cost in twenty-seven? What would it cost in twenty-eight? What would it cost in twenty-nine? And that would be increased. So that escrow account is set aside. So if everybody walks away from a landowner and company, the money is there to bring somebody in to decommission. Does that help?
Um, so we have to hire, I mean, these companies are using, um, subsidized our tax money to build these.
I agree. I understand.
She, if you heard, if you heard what he said though, he said, we would be the ones that hired the independent firm.
Paying for.
Whatever company comes in would pay for.
But you have to pay for that company.
No, 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 whatever company is trying to set up, the solar farm would pay for, not us. We would be responsible for hiring them.
Right, it's the same thing in the road regulations. As far as, um, hiring an engineering firm to oversee on our behalf, that's all paid for by whoever's building this facility. No cost to the county.
Okay.
And the fund would have an amount of money that would cover the decommission.
That's correct. That's correct.
So it's a zero cost affair to the county.
All good questions though. I appreciate you asking.
But I also would say, are we considering our neighbors? I mean, my friends and family that are there working hard to farm and everything, they don't want solar panels over eighteen square miles, which that could happen if you don't limit it to the two thousand that was originally planned.
And it hasn't come back to us yet, correct?
So I'm wondering.
So, go ahead.
Well, uh.
Well, one point, ma'am, just to make sure you understand, on twenty-fifth, I understand that this planning commission's open session for comment on the draft.
Yes, I will be here.
Okay, I'm meeting this Thursday also.
I just don't want you to miss that because that's another opportunity to directly address all these issues and the size of it.
But my concern is that these folks do the booking.
Yes, but you have to understand, Joyce, we have, we haven't got presented to us yet. So we cannot make any really formal comment about what's in the regulations.
I understand that.
So, I mean, it's just not even too.
I wanted you to start thinking about.
We've been, we've been thinking for the last three years.
What it, how it will affect land value for others around that don't lease out their land? Can you tell me how much those folks that own land down there will be paid per acre? Because I've heard from Texas and other places that it's up to possibly a thousand dollars per acre. So if they're really out.
And that's the thing, the landowner and leasing, and the leasing company. That's the thing, the landowner and leasing company, not us.
Okay, I understand that also. But they would be making big money while my family and friends are struggling to do farming nearby. And what I've heard from friends in Texas about these companies is very, very alarming. You cannot depend on them.
Okay.
I appreciate that. I, I appreciate your, your comments. Um, I will just tell you that a couple of comments if I can. As commissioner, and I'm just speaking for myself, I am put in a position where I have to represent all people in this county.
Yes.
Whether they're for or against, I will tell you and I will stand behind this. I've always said this. I am a huge proponent of landowner rights. If you own it, you pay the property taxes on it, it's yours to do with.
So.
And, and, and I. Does this make sense within the regulations or set forth?
Correct. That's just to be understood, so.
So half the people I talked to said, well, when the vote comes up, I'll just vote no about the solar farms. We don't get to vote, right?
But, but I will tell you, that's what we were elected to do. And, and, and I had this conversation with a gentleman this morning and it was a great conversation. I, I appreciate this guy, um, just because he, he's a firm believer in civil discourse. Being able to have a conversation without yelling in the screen and calling each other names. Uh, I talked to him from my home, all the way to here, second parking lot for fifteen minutes and talked to him. That. If, if giving everyone, if we put together a vote and, and we have to organize and spend thousands of dollars to let the entire county come in and vote, what's the next thing that people are going to demand they want to vote on when it comes to zoning regulation? What will be the next issue? Will it be a Walmart distribution coming in, or will it be whatever that would be? And, and when you do that, then is it dog zoning? Or is it anything to do with what we want to public vote on? You've done it before, you have to do it this time.
So would Walmart distribution center take up eighteen thousand acres?
I don't, I don't know where you're getting eighteen thousand acres. Again, I, I.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that.
Yeah, and I think I've explained.
Eighteen square miles.
I think I've explained that what these companies do is they, I, I call it a shotgun effect. They come in and they lease up everything they possibly can.
Yes.
And then, when they get to regulation and they see what's in the regulation, they go, okay, it may or may not work here and it's considerably smaller. That's what I've seen. That's, I drove to a, a facility in, in Iowa and I looked at that facility. That's exactly what had been done up there. So hopefully this helps. And, and if you understand where we're working from, I would caution you on, unless you're getting facts directly, where you get your information from. There's a lot of misinformation. I don't know if you've noticed, a lot of people like to use the words, I believe, I think, it appears, I've been told, those types of things. And I think whatever they put after that, for some reason, people take it as gospel. And so I hope the explanation of how this process works helps you.
Well, I will say I have learned a lot, but I'm still concerned about the outcome.
Sure.
I'm concerned about, uh, you know, the effect, how's it going to affect property value for my friends and family?
I understand that.
How's it going to affect insurance for their homes? I mean, there's just a lot of ripple effect to those who aren't going to be making the big bucks from leasing out to these companies.
Gentlemen, I guess I would say this. If they were drilling oil on your property and they struck oil, would you be in favor of pulling that out of the ground?
I don't think we'd ever let that happen.
Yeah, that, what I'm saying is, again, it goes back to landowner rights. And I am a huge proponent of landowner rights. And if someone has the ability to lease their property and make money off of it within reason, it's all about balance and moderation.
Okay, but is, uh, an oil theory, because I see some down when we drive over something and stuff, you know?
I just.
Does it do the same type of harm to neighbors as those hundred and sixty acres of solar panels would do?
Good.
How?
Well, I mean, there's fracking, using water, saltwater, uh, wells to track and create, you know, fluids, saltwater that goes to neighboring properties. And it drives up the, it probably would drive up the value of properties striking well. I, and your neighbors may not get value for that.
We have a spring fit. I mean, we're fortunate that we would never lease out.
And isn't that, isn't that the cool thing about living in this country is you get the right to determine that, right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you. Well, defer to our chair. We have a gentleman who'd like to ask a question.
Can I ask a question? Cut it down that route? I'll, I'll allow one question because this is a business meeting and if you're not on the agenda, you're not supposed to be able to address. But I'll allow one question.
Yeah.
Give me one second. What is the reason for entertaining the solar farm for our community? What is the reason?
Why? Do you want to?
I'm not quite sure where you're coming from on that.
We, we have a responsibility to create regulation if someone is looking at, in, in putting something like that in.
Sure.
Uh, again, I, I think you've heard me say, um, as a commissioner, I don't get the choice to go.
Sure.
I'm only going with one group of people because that's what they want.
Sure.
I have a responsibility to listen to both sides. And so that's, that's the reason I believe we could write this regulation. But I have not determined in my heart which way I'll vote.
Sure, sure. Can I be more specific on that same question?
Sure.
Who would be the primary beneficiary? Like who's gonna? Who would be the primary beneficiary?
Great question. You're lying?
All right.
I mean, it's a good question. Sorry, I really do.
Well, I asked it now because I feel like we had an opportunity. But that's the whole thing is there, I, I said this earlier, before you started off, I said this earlier. We do not have the regulations that have been presented to us yet. So we are in no position to answer a lot of this because I know that there's been things that have been, you know, the, Joyce, you've got to copy the regulations. If you're up at the clerk's office, you can get them real.
Yes.
And I want to say this.
Thank you.
I'm not going to read them until they come to me officially from the planning commission after they have voted on them. I don't believe that that is in my best interest to do. So these questions that you're asking really should be directed to the planning commission, not to us yet.
We won't be able to ask the question and get our answers.
If you don't mind, I'll just.
Sure.
Yeah, so, so the question was, how does this benefit or who does it benefit, right?
Yeah, who's the beneficiary partner?
Right, so, so what has been done in other counties and what we will do is if there are regulations and if there's a company that's going to apply for a sub, the special use permit, we will sit down with that company and we will negotiate a payment in lieu of taxes.
Sure.
And so that payment in lieu of taxes will come into the county and will go into our, uh, fund. And what we'll be able to do with that is reduce what we're having to budget on an annual basis. Part of it, I would like to help some other, uh, community, um, things. I'm not going to say what those are at this point. But, but it will, it would be able, you know, it would be able to help reduce what we have to put burden on the taxpayer, if that helps.
And I think to add too, since there have been a number of landowners who have come here and petitioned us. It was a year ago.
Correct.
And I don't know their names, cause I'm not familiar with them, but they did come here and, and basically asked for that allowance because there wasn't anything. So we had created this whole thing. And in the process, uh, there was essentially, uh, a mindset on, for the commission's part and my part, this was to be without experimenting for solar panels. But for the fact they would probably not like the limitation we would put on. Because we were, we were in the mindset of this thing is going to be limited, it's going to. I mean, for example, there's no, there's no allowance for battery storage because it's noise. Forbidden. They, I'm sure they don't like that. Uh, they probably don't like the fact that they're going to be depositing that fund.
I didn't read that in there, by the way. I read most of that.
Well, it, it says, you're not allowed to do taxes pretty quick if you don't, if you're not familiar with the language. That was, and maybe, maybe they changed it. But the other part of it is, is that the planning commission can say that, you know, when they talk about it on the twenty-fifth or when they vote on it, whenever they vote on it, they can say, no, we're not going to do it. We've done this work, we can't make it work, we're against it. We'll never see it.
I didn't like the language. I think it hits on the shoes going, it said the option to add like ten more. And that's, that's, that's a big swing. That's like ten percent versus a hundred percent.
Right, and, and if, and if you have that concern, next door on Thursday night will be the place to voice that. Because right now, they have, they have the regulation, they're the one asking the questions and they're making the change. Then it comes to us.
And I see what you're saying. I totally, I totally see what you're saying. So I appreciate that.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you. Leave a call if you have any other questions.
Well, I'll definitely call you.
Yeah.
You got one or two? It's, it's online, so.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got more than happy talking to you.
Thank you.
Good question.
Harry, I see you back there.
All right. Thanks for taking your time.
Don't be bad.
Let me be on our agenda. My name's Carrie Lutz. Bye. So I have, uh, just really three different items that I wanted to discuss and share with you today. One, the first one is to say they need to even allow and have an input to become a vote. I think it's the fairest way, um, to let our community see and see what they, what direction they look in. But the second is to inform and then to allow you to ask any questions. So when I come before, really didn't get into the nitty gritty as to why we're doing this and why you're needing to leave the fund. So I want to leave you with some things today. And one's a new, uh, foundation flyer that tells a lot about the services in our hospital. And I think there's, when we've been holding town halls over the last few weeks, there's a lot of questions about, you built this big place and now you can't afford to pay for it. And that's why you're asking the taxpayers now. And one thing I want to do here is we. And one thing I want to do here is we, it's, we would be in a much, much worse off situation, I believe, if we hadn't been able to expand. It's not the maintenance that we're needing assistance for. It's because we're not being reimbursed how we used to be reimbursed. Through the pandemic, you guys have seen here labor costs have gone up, supply costs, drug costs. We're close to 30% since where we were before the pandemic. And some of that pulled over 30%. And reimbursement just hasn't kept up with that. We've been able to add in more and more services to drive. Our orthopedic program is really growing. We're employing people, good for the county, good for the community. All of the students in the schools have experienced hands-on different avenues from treatments to lab to not register traditional personal. So just wanted to see if there were questions that you have on the side. Or I also want to talk about our community health needs assessment and ask if there was anyone, once I, I'm going in front of the city again in a couple of weeks, and senior housing is a big thing that came up on, on community health needs assessment. There's anything that you're doing that we should know about or anything within the county that someone would like to get involved with? There was about seven different items, and there's seniors in housing. I know, I believe the senior citizen center comes in under your umbrella. That probably would be separate from that, but it was more in housing. To that, why, we do have a really good Jackson County resource list that we compiled. It's on our website, but if you'd like a copy, I dropped one today too. Because we did give that to our patients. There's a lot of good resources and things going on in the community, so that was a sample.
Well, first off, you brought some folks with young, with a repeated interview.
Sure, right, right. A lot of different people there. So Roger Shopman is our marketing director. He also has recruiting for the hospital. Kobe Boots has a variety of titles. She is our quality director, but she's also over clinical informatics in our IT department as well. It's a new cap for her, and risk managers are newest cap. Gretchen Stanley is our HR director. And then Marilyn Whittkins is the city commissioner and also on our board.
Very cool. Thank you for being a person. You said housing. And so what do you think the, the approach for that should be? To create more housing, or how do you see that?
The seniors in our community vote affordable and...
Like zero entry?
Is there a place? My mom has a ton of single lady friends. Are there housing options that aren't based upon fixed income? That maybe don't require maintenance or those types of things?
So one of the things you could share... Yeah, one of the things you could share if you have contractors who are looking to build those types of facilities. So if it's a commercial facility that is maybe duplexes that are built specifically for, you know, seniors, there's a seven-year revitalization. It's a great tax rate over seven years. We set that up two years ago now, something like that. And that is county-wide. So if you went to Hoyt, and I'm just gonna use this example, and said, if somebody was thinking, you know, "Boy, we could put up maybe six duplexes down here and do something." They're gonna fill out the paperwork and be entitled to do that type of thing. So that's one of the incentives. As far as county funds, they're just starting. It's, it's tight, just like everything else is. You know, especially being revenue neutral this year, that makes it tough. You guys, I think that's another problem.
Well, one thing I do need is your son.
I got him in my car.
Perfect. I would think of him too.
I do need one, so. I, I, when you talk about reimbursement costs, your, and I'm trying to think what the proper name of this, your Medicare supplement.
The Medicare payments.
There you go. We were just talking about this, I sit on board for Northeast Kansas MultiHealth. And they were talking about this, that those are just horrific for reimbursement or, you know, being home help in the hospice and all that concern. They're just horrific. They, you know, because in a lot of cases, any patient, almost half, and it just, you know, I don't know what you can find there.
We're really educating the community and patients before they even sign up for them. A lot of times, we're not in network with so many plans. And then as the new year comes on and people show up for services, you find out there's a new plan that's been sold, but we have no idea what it even is. Oscar Health was, I think, the most recent one last year. It's not reimbursed very well, but we have a lot of community members that have sold quite into that, and they're on that plan. And so it's turning them away or trying to figure out a way to get them on. So I think we will be effective October 1st on Oscar Health. Teresa Hatfield is doing a community education on October 7th at the courtyard for lunch. She's a mutual person, she's very good, she knows her stuff. She's gonna get both sides. Yes, it may look like you're gonna get a free pair of sneakers or a lot of different things, or your rates are really low, but you're, what you're buying is not much coverage at all. And that's very unfortunate for the person that's making the money at the end of the day. It's dangerous.
Oh, yeah? Yeah. So I guess that'd be the thing that I would see that you probably try to combat the most is jumping down the national organization or something to try to fight that because it's just, to me, that's just horrific, what they do. And I don't understand how we can continue, how you guys can continue, how Northeast Kansas MultiHealth can continue if we're not getting reimbursed for, for the services that you provide. So.
I've talked to legislators, talked to the insurance commissioners, talking to the plans, but a lot of times, they don't want to really deal with a small rural hospital. They'll negotiate maybe with a larger urban hospital.
Right.
It is what it is. The last question, and I want to leave it open to you guys to their questions. If it would pass, what would county commissioners like to see back as far as transparency? I reached out to Seneca and Savannah, Maryville, that have county tax, sales tax that they're aware of. And what they provide back is all of their capital expenditures for the course of the year and show what they received from the county tax and then what they spent out. Does that sound, or what?
I think that, first, I think that'd be a good idea. That way we get to know taxpayers in the county. We can be accountable then for that. So, yeah, I think that would be a good idea if you did that.
Yeah, a bit similar to what they're doing up there. I think that would be good.
Yep.
The one other, one thing that I've heard, if you want a little bit of feedback. So I've had some people reach out to me and say, this is simple. And that'd be probably one more. Why, why are we going to have sales tax to pay for a huge addition? What's your response to that? Because I, I know what it is, but I, I think it's good to, good to say that.
And we've been asked that in a variety of different formats, similar to what I said. I think I've heard that, and walked in, that it was the Crystal Palace. Why should we pay for this Crystal Palace?
Sure.
That, first, and we've been asked, "Why are you renting that out and offset some of your revenue?" Well, that period is full. We've got patients that, and services that we haven't been able to provide before. Now we're able to provide that. From mental health to, we're starting substance use disorder treatment next month. None of those services would have been able to be provided if we wouldn't have expanded.
And it's sustaining itself.
It's sustaining itself.
That's...
I mean, getting down into the weeds, we've paid a lot for rent for 20 years and...
Building next door.
The building next door. And we're not continuing to be renting or utilizing those funds and now have building.
Yeah, building equity in your own facility. I think it's a great facility. Love Hoyt Clinic, great people. I think you're doing a fantastic job.
We do employ about 206 employees. But when you put the economic impact into that, and I've got hires for that, it's closer to 271 that we bring back to the community. So there's a QR code in the handout that's inside the magazine. And our website, Roger's done an amazing job. That would be a great place to list. I didn't bring work that I meant to, but I would love to take any phone calls. So to say, "Call the hospital," and in the past, to talk to Carrie, I'd be glad to talk to anyone and ask questions.
Was there something in Washington that passed just recently that was better than rural hospitals?
It is. The One Big Beautiful Bill Act. There it is, $50 billion that was passed in right around the 4th of July. And then last week, CMS came out with the application. It started out being worded in legislation as rural hospitals. It changed, as you guys know, as things work through legis, legislative, legislative story, to rural healthcare. So what it will be, what actually comes back to the whole community and hospital, I have no idea. Half of that $50 billion, it's split into two different arms. So one arm, $25 billion, it is split over five years. And it's split across the United States equally to each state. So if Connecticut, that I think has 30 rural hospitals versus the state of Kansas that has over 100, they're gonna get the same amount. So again, I'm not certain what that looks like. The other half, actually Governor Kelly has a lot of weight in what that looks like. She's been given about 11 different areas that she can utilize. She could use all 11, or she could prioritize what she thinks the need is for the state of Kansas. And it can be anywhere from IT to workforce. But it can't be something that we're doing right now, and it's not just a simple check. The government and really Oz with CMS and RFK with the HHS, those two entities where people really want to see something different and creative and new within healthcare. Because they feel like, you know, money's been thrown at it and something needs to change.
So the state will administer the federal funds. So do you and other hospital administrators get input?
We do.
Because that would make sense.
And there is a meeting next week. So she, the governor has been given a lot of different ideas, and the hospital association kind of said, "Here's some guidance for schools." And they married well with what the 11 were. But she really has final say in what the, what the alternatives will be. The other thing that changed recently too was the provider assessment tax. So it's here from a lot, because it does look like the hospital should be getting a lot. The provider assessment tax is based upon the amount of Medicaid patients that we take care of. And right now, Medicaid underpays any other insurance payer for services that are provided. So if, let's just say it's a $100 service, Blue Cross maybe pays about 80, and Medicaid, we're lucky to see 60 out of that from a percentage. So the assessment tax is taxed to larger hospitals, and there's a federal match with that. They're increasing that up to 6% for the next few years, and then they're getting a little bit back to 3%. 3% is where we're at now. You get that about a year later, and it is based again upon the volume of Medicaid patients that we take care of. So that is, is a good thing for the next few years as well. But it doesn't come like right at the service. I probably blazed your eyes.
Oh, you're good. I, I do appreciate everything you do of trying to get this going, get this passed. So keep it up, see what we can get done.
Do you think this would be of interest to any of you guys? We're just knowing that there's a resource listing on our website, you could direct patients to.
I think knowing, I think knowing that there's a resource on the website is good for me. I can, I can point people to that.
Sure. Thank you, though.
Yep, thank you very much.
I'll go get some yards.
Guys, thanks for coming to Portland. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The question was asked, "Does the county have to pass a resolution or a preparation?" The answer is no, you do not have an explanation. There are statutes that establish that you have to settle all accounts, you have to pay them. I'm sure that wasn't a surprise to you.
Sure.
So, but it doesn't say in any specificity how you can do that. Meaning it doesn't say a special resolution or similar. And it looks like it may have been run back in 68, but that was fielded, so... You guys have exclusive control of it according to the statute, so it really isn't something that's in the law. I know that cities have that with the margin, apart from the fact that you guys don't have it. So I might not be any good questions about that. You can tell me if you want to, obviously. But that's, that's not a problem. It's just the person doesn't know. There's not a piece of paper that says you do, so I'm falling for it. They page us every time. Okay, so, good answer?
I'm good. More of these updates, I don't know. This Kate's on, she's not here today, but she has sent me some information on Van Quip's place. Yeah, she issued a report that basically says, "Did not meet what is under requirements." That Ted's education, and he thinks that it can be wet flood proof. So... Whether or not that's legit, you might, I guess he's hiring somebody, maybe an engineer to prove that.
Thank you.
So he's hiring somebody. Yeah, to, to advocate on his behalf that he can wet flood proof it, which doesn't look like it's the case, but he can elevate, from what I understand, he can elevate it. Which this would, this would indicate he doesn't want to elevate it. He wants to say that he could fix it so that water comes through the flow stream or whatever. I'm not sure. I'm not very conversant on the details of how that happens. But that's something that I suppose if he gets approved for it and really establishes it, we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the main thing. So do you have any other things you want to go over? I don't know. I've got a lot of stuff going on, just gotta get through it all. And you think session talks about those things?
Yeah. Okay. I'd like, I'd like one for, I was very glad privilege claims against county.
How long?
13?
15. So I suppose we're going to executive session, sort of, starting from the privilege. Discussion for a period of, you said 15 minutes? 15 minutes, starting at 10:31. With the meeting to reopen at 10:46. You're a part of the whole in this room. For the purpose of discussing genuine legal matters involving the county. And the clerks. If I had to say, the clerk decided to stay.
Fair, a second?
I'll say it.
Kate, you've brought the due consent into going to executive session 15 minutes for claims against county, current law prevailing, with clerk. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all fair, say aye.
Aye.
All bow the same side, motion carried.
Aye, all vote the same side, motion carried.
Bob, do you have anything else more?
I think that's it to me. Unless you have any good.
Anybody have anything else?
Good.
All right.
Thanks, sir.
Hi, I'm with us.
This is a business meeting, not an open meeting, sir.
But it's an open meeting.
It's an open meeting, but not a public open meeting for you to speak. Okay, if you want a business meeting, if you need something, you should have gotten on the agenda. You want to get on the agenda next week? That's perfect. Did you have Colby?
I don't know. I don't know what's in there. What other thing?
See you, Tom. Thank you.
I was back in like 70.
What was that?
So. We have a budget, say you have a budget of 32,000, you expect 20,000.
You went over 40. It's outside of that.
Bad girl, bad girl. But you.
I'm just, I'm a little concerned. I'm just going to go over skin. About 25 minutes worth.
Has everybody read your minutes? I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 15th, 2025. Were there any corrections?
I'll tell them.
Second.
Okay, it's the probable move second to approve the minutes of September 15th, 2025. Any further discussion? Here you now, and all in favor say aye. Aye, all vote the same side, motion carried. We haven't got a business report today?
We have the.
Okay, so the last reason, we had said that we were going to go ahead and approve or pay the 3% increase. So I told Christine that we didn't need them to come in because we wanted to send them. So we just do that and.
I didn't tell them that we're calling in January.
Yep. Yep.
So just have the.
So, and you said you had found the funds and general fund to pay that? So we should be good there. They'll need approval and then for that, so. So it's carry all this forward. All right, so any other business?
No.
Can't think of anything. Christie, can you do anything else? All right, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, it's the probable move second to adjourn this meeting.
Can I ask a question?
You can ask, and you can ask a question after the meeting's over, sir. Then we'll be out of the official session. Okay? And if you want to talk to me out of the session, then we'll.
Is that the proper way to do this?
Yes, sir, it is, because this is a business meeting. There is no public comment during a business meeting unless you're on the agenda. One-way dialogue only. What's that? One-way dialogue only.
No, so what he means by that is so.
It's fine, please. Appreciate that.
Sure. So getting people on the agenda to speak and typically.
Sure.
You know, you have three minutes, but the chair has the authority to extend. And so if we don't have it in a business meeting, if we don't have it controlled that way, and we have 30 people show up and 30 people want to give, ask questions, we don't get the business done. And so that's what, that's why the rules are set up that way, so that we can have a good dialogue.
Sure.
But it's in a, in a way that we can conduct business and get things done, as opposed to somebody throughout the meeting going, oh, I just thought of something. I want to ask this again.
And I will say this too.
Yeah.
We had to set these rules up this way because a couple of disruptive people who came into the meeting when we had an open meeting, you could walk in the door, you wanted to talk to us, great. That's the way that we like to do it.
Would you class that way to that guy there?
No, that's not, but we had to have, we had to have the rules. No, I'm not saying that for heaven's sakes. We had to have the rules set up that way.
We tried to clarify.
Sure. We had to have the rules set up that way because of the disruptive people who came in and the nature of their discussion, which had nothing to do with county business, had nothing to do with anything.
Oh.
So we had to set these rules up this way.
Sure.
And do I like it? No, I don't.
And I will tell you one other thing. So for a little over a year, we had, once a month, we would have a Monday evening meeting, where it was just a work session. So the.
For any qualms?
Yep.
And you can come in, you can ask anything you want. We could have some dialogue that way, but nobody showed up to it. Very few people ever showed up to it. There were some nights we sat here and no one would show up to it. One night we had one individual sat here for an hour, and we talked to him for an hour. So, yeah, we'd like to have more of that kind of conversation. Again, that's why I gave you my phone number, if you want to reach out to me. You have questions?
All right, okay. All right, there's a motion on the floor in a second for adjourned the meeting. Any further discussion? Here you now, and all in favor say aye. Aye, all vote the same side, motion carried.
I'll ask you.
Sure, sure.